Okay.
We had a little video issue, so we're back to Daniel Town Council meeting Monday, December 4th, 2017. We were discussing the process of filing mechanic liens on issues that would require such. At this point, I'm going to make the board to, you know, if we have, like, given this letter, excuse me, give Daniel this letter, he can fine-tune anything we need to take care of the issue as far as liens, or does somebody have any other suggestions? And/or is that what you're kind of, it seems the easiest to me.
I would think that the legal department ought to really have a shot at this letter, especially when it comes to collection.
That's kind of what it indicated with regards to, it should be in there if we're going to do that route. Whatever route we're going to do, it should be in here.
Lynn brought up another point for this. We've always tried to separate the Daniel Municipal Water from Storm Haven after we annexed all of the private water up there. Technically, do we need to add that second engine to this? I know the reason why we've kept them separate is so that we could get our hands on grant monies and try and keep them independent, and that way, Storm Haven, Crazy Acres, Tammy Lane, that whole system up there is weak, and therefore, it's a little bit easier to get a grant rather than to put it with the town now that has a modernized system. But, from a legal standpoint, is Storm Haven, Crazy Acres, Tammy Lane, are they all considered Daniel Municipal Water?
Good question to ask you on that, because my mind was telling me to have two documents of different titles, meaning same wording, same everything, one for that water company and one for this water company. You bring up a good point, and I wouldn't know the...
Well, Lynn brought it up.
Lynn, yep.
But, I'm wondering if it's really necessary.
Necessary to have these for both, or necess...
Necessary to have the Storm Haven, Crazy Acres, Tammy Lane issue. I mean, it is under that umbrella as far as I'm concerned.
Perhaps if you didn't say Daniel Municipal Water and Storm Haven, if you just said Daniel Water, it would help us both, as far as time is running.
See, and I would definitely split those out, because then you know you're covered.
Yeah. We're split everywhere else.
Okay, how far do you split? And do you split Crazy Acres, Tammy Lane?
No, because that's all under the Storm Haven Water Company.
Okay. The old private company?
Well, it still shows Storm Haven on the drinking water website, it has their number, and so that's how I would, I'm sure that town will turn and look at that.
It's still a different, distinct water system, separate.
Okay. Then, I think I agree with Eric on this. We could suggest, that would be our suggestion to the attorney, that we really have the two names affiliated with this.
Have a second agreement everywhere that says Daniel Municipal within the agreement treaty with Storm Haven, and depending on where they live, they get that agreement.
At least that takes the arguing out of it. Well, this is a farmy, I'm not from that system.
Yeah. There's going to be quite a bit of modification to this, because in every other paragraph that's saying the town of Daniel, so it has to, I'm wondering if we almost have to have two separate agreements depending on where you live.
Yes.
And I'm going to ask him if it matters, or which one, or why we should do it, and just get both of the, if it's two, we're going to get them both taken care of, if it's one, we're going to combine it, it'll be one that would legally work on our behalf.
Yeah, even if you use the same document slash Storm Haven.
In my mind, that's how simple it could be.
Yeah.
Okay. So that line on him was continued discussion to process file mechanic liens and collection matters. At this point, is there any more on the collection side, or I think that probably take care of it and I'll get clarification on this.
Is it possible to move down the agenda a little bit, and while we're on this letter, bring in the zoning and planning commission and their recommendation as to what a private water line is versus public? What was that, Eric, exactly, that we were, didn't the planning commission recommend that they stay away from this and have the water department draft it?
Yeah, because you guys would be closer to it. They said they would like to have the water department have, put in there, because they're going to be the ones that's actually doing the maintenance and operations of those lines.
And so, wouldn't that add a paragraph or two to this existing agreement?
No, because that's all handled when the subdivision's recorded, whether it's a private drive or a public drive. We just, as far as planning, the staff doesn't know how to instruct those people when a subdivision comes in front of us, the application, and they want it to be private, but we're running a public water line, we don't know whether, because it's a gray area, is that a public right of way? Is that not a public right of way? And so, on the last ones, I had them change, you shouldn't say I, we had them change that wording on that deed that says it is a public right of way. So the town has not only the easement, but a public right of way in there, so there's no question about whether we have the authority to go in there and dig.
So basically, that problem's handled.
Unless they want to stay private. If they want us to keep that private without letting us have a right of way through there, that's when we would have the issue.
Why would they have the say over the town?
Because it's their road, they have to grant us the easement.
Yes, but it's still a water line, and if no one else is around, the night that eight-inch line bursts, the town's going to have to take care of it.
Right.
Not the private owner.
Right, and that's why we talked about having a valve on the main line, you turn off, it's their problem if they want it private. And so, we discussed about isolation, so that that's not affecting, our biggest problem there, I think, in planning, they brought up, was, well, what if we have contamination coming back into our line? Which, and then Ryan suggested that we have an isolation backflow.
Yeah, I think what we said, if they don't want to make it a public easement, so it's not our water line, then we'll put in a valve with, you know, the backflow preventers and meters and stuff, and then we'll have a shut-off, if anything goes bad behind the meat, behind that, we shut it off and let them deal with it, and then the backflow will prevent anything, any contamination of their lines getting into our water system. So they can either be public or can have a valve, or the two traces.
Yeah, which is pretty expensive, but...
More than one attitude.
You asked if we could move those up, so I'm going to move up nine and 10 now, so we are, if we're doing water, is there, if you want to maybe either write what you might think, might be another couple of, or a paragraph or a sentence or a subject matter that you might want him to address, like we talked about. Other than that, let's say it's nine, oh, we're still with nine and 10 as far as water issues, and we won't have to readdress them down here in a little bit.
Do you see a hang-up on that anywhere?
No, I think we're fine.
Trying to get into something, I mean, because we have an accurate area there on that last one. We do have two more approved.
If we can get those rules moved up front with the permits and all of that, and unlining...
I think, you know, we don't, we really don't want any roads, that's just a liability for the town, but if we look down the road 20 years, and this might be a thoroughfare somewhere else in the town, then there's, then there's probably cause of town would want to have access to that road for a public right of way.
Well, even in this particular situation, all you need is one more lot back there, and it turns into a public road.
Yeah, but then that changes, all the road standards change.
Is it still, is it still in question on that, if it's public or private on that road?
The road is private, but we have a public right of way through there.
There you go, okay. Sorry, I was mistaken. Okay?
Yes.
So, you know, if we wanted, like I say, if we're looking at that, and it's something the town wants, then we need to know that upfront, if we want to make this a public road right of way. And then probably the standards would change at that point, because...
I think that was part of having the 50-foot, requiring 50-foot right of ways, whether it was a private road or not, was that now or in the future, the town, there was a 50-foot right of way for the town to utilize, which I thought was generous for the homeowner, since most of them are 60 or 60 feet, or 60 feet, 70 feet, or more.
Yeah.
Heber's minimum, 72 now, isn't it?
Yeah, they just redid their standard.
So 50 feet's generous, but it does allow us to give it corridoring.
Okay.
The Daniel Water Issues, we've just added three new customers. He'll be a force of it probably next month. I can't think of anything else, oh, there is one. Lynn, when it comes to costing out the project on Little Sweden, is it Bear?
Bear.
Bear? We have not received an invoice for Blacktop yet, and I've talked to Scott about it and asked him to drop one by, and, you know, he did not bill the town when he did a patch-up of Storm Haven that was 20 foot by 3 foot wide, so I don't know whether to pursue that or to let go.
No, he will bill you.
Okay.
It'll come through, just a matter of when.
So, I guess you cannot really close that town invoice to them until we get the asphalt back.
And that's why you need to tell them, we're waiting to build the owner, we can build.
Okay, I'll do that.
Kim, where were the new water hookups, you know, you remember?
That new road that's down by you.
Those three houses, or three of them?
Well, there's two up there, the third one's not got the truss on it yet, but I'm assuming that, you know, it will probably come online in January, maybe December. And then the other one's up on Little Sweden, which we're discussing now, so there's three, where is the fourth?
That, that's three on Three Farms Road, and then Bear, that's four.
So, you've installed the meters on two and three farms? Is the billing supposed to begin as of December 1st?
Good question. I discussed that with Kathy today. The one, the Clyde residence has been hooked up illegally for three months, so as far as I'm concerned, you can start that one in December, that's the instruction I give her. The other residence has not been hooked up, so I would, excuse me, I would start that one in November. And then the Brown residence, which we just hooked up, I started the billing in in December.
And how about Bear?
December. Would be my recommendation.
Any other matters?
Storm Haven?
Yep.
We do have another water leak up there, gets down in the Crazy Acres area. It's not a real bad leak, but it is a leak.
But it's a new area, new section leakage.
Yeah, it's a new leak in the system, and there's four or five pine trees there that are a good three-foot diameter, and one of them's got to come out at least, I think. Ryan, did you look at that by chance?
I have not, I've not there, sorry.
Yeah, they've been doing well on that leak.
How did you identify that location, Kim?
Where the leak is?
Yeah.
Well, in this case, between the main line to where the meter box is full of water is only about 30 feet, so it could be on the main line south or north, or it could be on that line from the main line to the meter box. But, what we've suggested to the homeowner is if, as slow as that leak seems to be, and if the meter box is only about a third full right now, is to get a quote, have that pine tree paid. Then if we do have problems, we're able to dig, you know, that day, rather than wait a week with water running everywhere for somebody to cut that pine tree.
Pine tree on private or are blue ground, his property?
To be on his property. And we can't move the line to the north, because there's another pine tree within 15 feet, we can't move it to the south, because it puts it in this driveway, so it's almost that we have to clean that area up, it's a straight shot, it's a straight...
You know, the name of, where do you have?
Pines.
Pines? Those are big pine trees. So it's kind of weird down there, because the water line is behind the fence line, so it's way onto their property.
We could have a main line problem with those big trees, and you tipped one of those over, it might take us a few months.
Yeah, that might be...
The whole root ball, the whole root ball is going to do its thing, and that's just cut two foot off, like, out of the mountain, and then they're going to have to grind the stump down, so it's about to get rid of it.
But we've been trying to identify, you know, how much water is missing from the system. We take the customer's usage, and then we look at what's been pumped from the tank. And we haven't started doing that until end of the month of September, and we started that in mid-September, now we're reading it along with the meters manually every month, and we are missing quite a bit of water, so...
There's more of these.
I think that there is, but it's really hard to tell, this is, this is still a guessing game, but I'm a little bit surprised at the capacity that small well does put out, that pump in the well itself, but I hope within another 90 days or so, we're able to identify things a little better.
So when you say missing quite a bit, Kim, do you have an idea what quite a bit is?
Well, it depends on customer usage too, like, in the summertime, the Storm Haven customer up there, I believe there's 56 of them, 55, they use as much as 800,000 gallons, because a lot of those residents do not have secondary irrigation, and yet, last month, they only use 195,000. So to get a read on what's missing and what's happening, I need to have your license, an engineer's license, to get the some of this once in a while, it's kind of... Ryan's been very helpful, and he's the one that fills, I'm going to make sure that he continues to fill out these reports going to the state of Utah, because if he doesn't, it could get very confusing between what he does discretionary and what I do discretionary. There's a lot of different things on those forms that want to know if there's secondary water in, but hopefully, we get all this worked out by mid-September, early summer.
So, to wrap up that leak, we have identified the area, but we haven't dug down to see what might have caused, so it's kind of a wet spot, or leaking, or draining, or...
It's right in, it's right in the meter box.
Oh, it's right in the meter, okay.
We have water in the meter box, we don't know where the leak is.
Yeah, it could be up to...
I was going to say, yeah.
I suspect the three-foot tree probably has something to do with it.
The two-foot root?
With the two-foot roots and everything else, but...
So what kind of a right-of-way agreement do we have on that, up there, nothing?
That's funny, nothing to my knowledge, but prescriptive easement, because the pipe's been there a long time.
That's it.
Literally.
See, we might have to look at that, because, I mean, you want to, all green rooted vegetation we keep off of our other ones.
And it's thickener.
Yeah.
Well, you're talking real expensive to this particular owner, if you, if in fact, those five pine trees on the north side of the drive, they have to be taken out at 1,200 bucks a piece, rough estimate.
And that's actually quite low.
The three on the south, and then you go the next neighbor, and you've got the same thing. Now, I was thinking that the water line, Eric, was two or three feet off the asphalt, but you're saying it's on the other side of the property.
It's inside the fence line over there.
So it's not really that far from the meter box, correct?
I was surprised how far in there it was.
And yet, down in, in the south end of that, it drifts out more to the asphalt.
It does drift, yeah. That's what makes it so hard to identify, we don't have locate wires with it.
We do have some rough drafts, I have seen them.
I have a rough draft. Matter of fact, the rough draft goes, it's going right, two feet off of that barn, at the top end of that Storm Haven, or that Crazy Acre road.
See, if you had a leak along that particular road, you've got the downside of the river bottom, and so that leak could just drift through there, and, you know, it could be filling up the area.
Owning a well in that area, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah.
There's a replenish charge, we just have to identify who it is.
Obviously, that's something we're going to keep looking at.
Yeah, and I, I'm not aware of anything else, Eric, if I, or, did I miss something here?
No, I think that's still under investigation.
So, what did you find? So if you end up digging up around the meter and stuff, and the leak is between your main and your supply line, would you move the meter closer to the main, and you lose some liability for the water company that way? It's just a scenario that I thought of that might be.
So the policy and the standards is that the meter goes just before the property line, so in a perfect world, not the one we inherited, all our water lines are in a right of way, and then the meter goes right on the line, just our side of the line, and then it's the customer's responsibility on their property. So, in a perfect world, we would move the meter out into the right of way, and so it would actually go the wrong way, but I think this one's going to be a while before we get there.
Yeah, that's what I... See, and when we walked, I was Susie, she had indicated we're back in there, or she was out by the big stone, and, and we zoom in on that, it's clearly behind, so it's like, whoa. And then that makes sense why the meters are so far in their properties.
Because the water line...
They came off the main and...
The other thought I had, and I haven't walked it, but at $1,200 a tree, you know, $30 a foot for pipe, is it better to put the pipe out where we want it? Would that be cheaper? But I don't, I don't know.
Wouldn't that be a decision for the homeowner? I mean, we could recommend that, but wouldn't that be a cost to the homeowner? I mean, we're not paying to have the trees taken out, they're on his property.
That would be my first lot, for sure.
I think all those things could be discussed, I'm not, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with you, but just cost effectiveness, one cuts down the trees, one gets our pipe out where we want it, if they're the same cost, maybe, you know, I'm looking for other alternatives and other ideas to come up with, and that's one idea I had, I haven't had time to go out there and look at it, see if that's viable, having that time to run it by you and Gary in the council to see if a piecemeal water line movement is something we even want to consider.
Okay.
Well, I mean, if somebody's kicking in seven grand instead of moving his trees, that helps.
No, like, if I were that homeowner, I would rather pay to move a water line than pay to have all my trees cut down that I've spent forever growing and...
Absolutely.
It could possibly happen against you.
Yeah, because you're still got the line there.
And I'll still have water line to deal with later, so...
In this particular case, you end up in the asphalt.
That's to get away from the trees, you know.
Did I say 30? I meant $60 a foot.
Pulling new lines through, the meter's back to the main, it's a new meter.
And I might miss this also, Kim, but timing on this particular issue we're discussing, is this a springtime or is this a now time?
I, I don't know, Eric, it depends on how bad that leak is. I would assume that leak's been going on for a little while, and it's not, it's not as bad yet, but it's come up out of the lid, but if that happens, it would sure be nice to have that pine tree missing, because that's going to say yet three or four days right there.
And a big piece of equipment.
Yeah.
And has, and have you had discussions with the homeowner on all this?
Yes.
Landowner?
Yes. Before he's through, you'll talk to the governor.
There you go.
He has discussed this with Mr. Walton, myself, Brian Taylor, so I think he's looking for, he's just looking for some good answers, cheap answers, can't lie to that.
Do you think that is probably 10 houses there that are back behind?
The leak, yeah.
10?
Are you saying that line is certificated, we moved it, we moved it all 10 houses?
Well, if you come out, I mean, you don't have to do 10, but it makes sense if you've mobilized to go ahead and bring it out and come down.
Well, that's where I think that, to do it piecemeal certainly is something we want to talk about, there's, there's advantages, but there's a lot of disadvantages to doing one lot at a time, so I think it's worth having that discussion, but I think, I think it's still early in the process, Kim and I probably have, there's probably other options that we haven't thought of yet, that we all need to go back and forth on and see what we can do.
And is this going to, could go into CDVG by chance?
Potentially.
Next, not this round, but maybe another round? Maybe this round?
Potentially this round, we haven't finalized the scope of work yet, and then we, I thought I had, but I could not, you know, the ship hasn't sailed on that one, so we could change that.
Something to think about, anyway.
Well, and we've talked about, you know, the tank would be our highest priority if it wasn't for the state's issues, and then water lines are right behind that, maybe, you know, I can't remember what order we have the water lines in, but I'd say this leak might be a good reason to reprioritize which water lines.
Are we getting down to the timeline with the state for those points that we need to fix?
We have till spring to finish the well, so we can wait till the ground crews.
Okay.
Good question.
Any other questions or real good?
I, as far as I know, Eric, do you have someone's paperwork?
No, I don't, I think everything up there is, we know it's a mess. Does that mean, probably? I need to turn mine off, I should have. There it is now.
Okay, so just for agenda item, we've also taken care of nine and 10 there, and you had nothing else to bring up on these two issues?
I don't, no, we've got our, we've got our reports back, and they're clean.
Just, just real quick, now that I've looked down at my paperwork, everybody's probably got one of these from Utah, or Hoover Light and Power, and it talks about how to get rid of the pink slips and hanging them on the door. This is when you get delinquent or in the rear with the billings. And the only reason I bring that up is...
Will no longer be handled or...
Yeah, they tell you, they tell you it's by the US mail.
Yeah, they usually hang them on the doors, they've been...
That, that policy is now left Hoover Power and Light, so...
To know if it's by chance liability issues, or they're just manpower issues, would you know why they changed by chance?
I don't.
Eric, could you?
No, and there may be some legal ramifications to doing that with, with children in the house, cutting the...
I wonder if this could be helpful to the town attorney with a little bit of what they, they talked about the same stuff in this agreement, I think it's in number three of the sentence.
Kim, if you wanted to maybe stop by the office and we'll put that pink sheet and that, and we'll just have a little discussion before I move that on, that way, clear on which questions are specifically asked, as well as the general.
Okay, sounds good.
So I got our sample reports from the water, Storm Haven and Daniel Municipal, and what you guys want to use. They're both good. Congratulations to Kim, since she's passed the test.
I did.
Clean hands and everything. Kind of dust on a piece of finger ruined the sample.
Since Kim's become a certified operator, we haven't had a single bad test.
Oh, that is awesome.
And I'm going to get that out now, because next month it might change.
I was going to sample later on this week, or this month, I've been trying to sample through the first week of the month.
Do you want these back, Eric, or...
Yeah, if you don't, I'll just put them in file, I keep track of them.
And you also took care of item two earlier, so that would be one, two, nine, ten. Eric, turn the town over to you for business, number, item number three, business licensed applicants.
We have no renewals this month?
And no, it's licensed with... New, I have new already.
No, new or renewed.
Link for new one. Okay, great. Moving on to item number four, recommendation letter from planning, Ari bunker zone change. I will read that, and then turn the town over to Eric, and then I'll turn the town over to the public and council. So, Town of Daniel Planning Commission recommendation, date November 15th, 2017. Ari, the zone change bunker, please be advised that the Daniel Planning Commission recommends the following action, if the council denies the bunker zone change, we thank you for your consideration at this time.
Any names inside that? You want to sign it on there? Sure, huh?
Try to sign this somewhere else. Okay, so, Eric, turn the town over to you, and kind of, you know, for, for me and, Eric, just, I'll say a question if I have to enter presentation.
Okay, all right, super. Okay, I've, the planning said they wanted more information, so I brought some more information, and I'll bring you guys to review. Did you go through that? As I go through that.
There you go.
So what I've done is I went through the town code, does everybody know where the property is? Right over here on this end? This property right here. Okay, so it's our only, well, we do have this one industrial, but we have an industrial in the Town of Daniel right here across the road.
That one, it's a lot?
Uh-huh, that's industrial, and then all of this white here is airport industrial. You have airport industrial, and this is all industrial, this is... You have airport industrial and this is all industrial, this is county transfer station. And then this is the industrial that's in the Town of Daniel, that one acre lot. And then, of course, we have that strip that was done by the county in 2002. And we've had some of the other zone changes we've talked about when this was changed.
Behind McCarthy's and that strip, yeah.
Yeah, and that actually killed over into Heber City, that, that zone change. All this is, is industrial, which is, as the airports come in, they've just changed it all to industrial. So this is all industrial and some commercial on Daniel Road. Okay, so you're familiar with where it is now? So if you'll open up your first page packet, I have it highlighted, the town general plan. And so I just went through there and highlighted a couple of things. The general plan is a, is a guide to land use control and development in the Town of Daniel. Provide a stable basis of policy upon which elected and appointed officials can rely. So then I jump down to number ones, in the specific, to promote the most appropriate type of development in each planning area of the town while maintaining the rural atmosphere. Then I've highlighted number three, to foster commercial and light industrial development that will strengthen the economic base of the town. And then down to number six should be highlighted, to ensure the local units of government can obtain their highest return per dollar spent in maintaining water and sewer facilities, storm drainage facilities, streets, parks, and other type of public facilities and infrastructure. Okay? So that's our general plan. Those are just some things I've highlighted, there's some other things that apply in there, I'm sure you're familiar with the general plan. Then I've highlighted in the item number two is the Town of Daniel Land Use Plan. And so I went through there and highlighted some of those. The goal of the Daniel Land Use Plan is to provide a general pattern for the location, distribution, and character of future land issues. The objectives of land's plan are to, and then it goes down through there, the third bullet I've highlighted, concentrate commercial areas along the two major arterials, US 189, or 89 and US 40, and encourage revitalization by upgrading facilities, reducing traffic conflicts, and improving parking where needed. So we've identified the commercial zones along the highway corridors in your land use plan and also in the general plan. And so I've highlighted the first sentence in intent. The intent of the land use plan is to achieve the coordination and harmonious development of the town and its envi- environments. And then if you'll go down, you'll see the bottom one there that's highlighted also. The need for land use transitions to ensure compatibility with adjacent development or environmentally sensitive areas. And so that's what this plan comes into place, is we make those transitions, that it's harmonious, that it's where it is. And so that's why I bring up how much industrial is down there. We have an RA five section that goes surrounded on both sides by industrial, not commercial, but industrial. It's a higher, is a higher use. If you flip that page, down at the bottom, it, it has commercial land use. Commercial areas have been placed on the edge of the town adjacent to highway corridors to minimize impact and disruption to the residential areas of the town. Commercial development should be limited to areas where police, fire, water, sewer, roads, and communication systems are readily available. We know, as, as this guy came and presented some of this fiber to the town, that those corridors are on the highway already. So, a lot of that infrastructure's been placed on highway corridors first. Okay, on the next page, the size and location of commercial development should be keeping in, should be in keeping with the road capacities and land use context in which commercial centers develop. And that's the reason we put them on the highway, on the highway corridors. They don't impact the core of the town. We have a different situation in our town where everybody else has a main street, we don't have a main street. So our, our commercial development, we've identified on the commercial corridors. So we will continue to have applications for commercial on the edge of town because that's where we identified it to be. And so this property surely falls within that, along the corridors. So, third, fourth bullet down, commercial development including intensity of activity should be in scale with the neighborhood context. We've talked about the neighborhood context and what's going. By no, I shouldn't say by no planning of Daniel Town, but because we, we were a township before and the county recognized us as a township and we, I mean, we've all served on and boards as, as advisors to the county council at when we were a township. So those, those areas have been done and we've reaped some of the rewards from that, like the 3,000 south intersection. Some things that we had foresight to get in place prior to the town becoming into existence, so those.
I'll ask a quick question if you don't mind.
Sure.
So that object in the commercial developments including intensity of activity should be in scale with the neighborhood context.
Right.
How is that quantified? How is that even based with regards to activities and, and the scales with regards to what may or may not be put there? So we're talking about commercial ground here and it's telling us that commercial development including intensity and activity should be in scale.
So the scale we have?
There we go.
All of, all of public works across, right, right there. The entire county public works there, the entire transfer station, it's a 24-hour facility. Those guys are in and out of there all the time. So, we know the intensity is high there and of course, we all know about the airport and the intensity behind it. And, and hours of operation that happen on both sides of that. That's why this piece of property is so, so ripe to be commercial. And if you look down a little bit further there, the industrial use, it actually would qualify to be under the industrial zone based on industrial on both sides. But that's not what we're asking for here, we're asking for commercial. So, just for those people that don't have this in front of them, an industrial area has been designated as a buffer between residential areas of the town and the Heber City Airport. Care should be taken in the development of this area so that it actually serves as a buffer rather than intensifying the effects of the airport on surrounding residential development. And so they put in that industrial use on this, this right here to buffer. So we put it in an industrial zone to buffer the residents, which is a higher use than commercial. And so you, the rock yard's in that zone, we have, there's some, several high intensity uses. Uh, the, the concrete crushing is in this zone. We have the transfer facility, Anderson Transfer.
You're talking about everything in industrial that can happen?
Right, and so, those, you know, when they start crushing concrete over there, it's, it's pretty intrusive. I mean, you, and we still get complaints from the saw yard that they opened those doors up in the, in the, in the summer and that saw runs 24/7, it's all computerized. And if you live next to that, it's... It could bug you, for sure. So there is a higher use that I think would fit in this area, but that's not what we're asking for, we're asking for a commercial. Okay, on your next page is a zone establishment. And in ti, this is the Daniel Town Code establishes the purpose and how to, to make the zones and what our authority is for the zoning from the council. It's a lot of information, I hope.
Can I ask a question or a comment? Old maybe? Does the county, does the, does the council or the planning department take it upon themselves to say that certain areas should be zoned commercial and change it without property owners' request?
Yes.
Can they do that?
They do have that authority. Because a lot of times you'll get in a situation where you're planning the town, you're looking out, we don't, we don't look at 10 years, we're looking at 30 years and 50 years out. And if there's something, an industrial park that you want a commercial to go to, and you'll see this in Price and a lot of areas, they went out of town, they've zoned this commercial, and that's where they want their, their growth to go. So they, they've marked out where residential's gonna go. If you go to Heber City, they have a big map and it has all the different colors on it, and they just redid this just last week. So, there's a new one out, but they, they indicate where you wanna be. Now, when they brought that in front of the town folks, Julie Wagstaff down here by the airport was in the brown map, this was before it was a town. And it, and it causes a lot of concern when you see that map, because now all of a sudden, you don't know what your property's gonna do. Somebody else is making that decision of what it's for. So if you wanted to do something with your property, say, you have property rights, you wanna do this with it, all of a sudden, there's another plan there that they've designated for something else. Which Heber City all around was around the airport, they want airport-related industry around there, and so that's what it's for. And the money that they get from the feds, that's what that money's for, is to buy them properties for that reason. So there's a push for that, but yeah, there are, there's a, there's a lot of them that have done that. We've chosen not to do that in the Town of Daniel, is to go out, because we, we are really isolated with our, with our little triangle of where that can go. All the airport area, well, this is not, not available, it's in Heber City. So we're really limited on our frontages, on the commercial zones, and areas on the highway corridor, just for that impact only. They just don't want, we just don't want the traffic coming through towns in these industrial areas. We know Dunn, Dunn has a crushing plant over here, though they're coming up and across that road, and there'd be a lot of complaints. And even though they have an agreement, they actually are on, when that went in, it has a conditional use and they've agreed not to go this way, well, that road didn't exist at that point. They have agreed to come out and go up and out on Airport Road, which was designed as an industrial artery. And that's in their conditional use agreement, but they're still coming the other way. So it's a matter of enforcement on the other side, so.
Okay, so for me personally, my business, I was actually in the county, got taken into an annexation I didn't wanna belong to, got taken to, to the minority side, and then the zone was changed when they annexed me. And it took quite a bit to get back to my original zone because there was quite a few people that really needed that zone. So, I mean, it happened, it's a shocker and they, and...
Yeah, and, and you heard the heftales when they came, they changed, they didn't know. And that was really, that was countywide. There was no more grazing zone after that. They took all that away and all, Preservation 160, so the grazing zone actually disappeared from the entire county at that point. And they just did that by noticing a paper. And so, yeah, that ability is there. Because a lot of times, you're just not looking out 50 years, you know, we're, we're looking to next week. And all of a sudden, 50 years, it comes so fast, so. So that, I hope that answers your question. Okay, so then I've, the next page is the Town Code 81001, and that's a purpose of the commercial zone. I've highlighted item number four, provide commercial zones at a butt or in close proximity to a state highway. That is a recurring theme in all of our documents that we have. We've identified that, that's where commercials go. Uh, number five, provide access to commercial zones off major roadways that are convenient and able to handle major traffic volumes without hazards. So that, that becomes a big issue about the edge of town and why we do that. Okay? So what I've done there is I've just went through the town, these are all town documents that the town has. I've highlighted why this section of property should be zoned commercial. Those are the reasons, it's in our general plan, it's in our, all of our documents that we've had as to what we planned for. So what we've done on this property is exactly what the town has asked to happen on properties. So we do have some encroachments that's coming shortly, probably, maybe, that may affect these properties. And so this, this is the way that we're trying to protect our property rights.
As far as your interpretation on number five, provide access to commercial zones off major roadways that are convenient and able to handle major traffic volumes without hazards. So, this is certainly all logical and I would certainly agree that we have always planned for any kind of commercial on the outsides. But access to those, to those grounds being commercial off of, is 3,000 considered a major roadway?
It is, is a major artery for the Town of Daniel. And it is also, if you'll remember, when the maps came out from the county, we have evacuation. And that also, so we're, we're able to secure some grants for roads to redo those sections up through Little Sweden as, as an evacuation route for the county. So we serve, there's some funds that free it up when it's designated as a... You don't have to look too far to see what they think of that 3,000 south corridor, the bike path is on there without the town's acknowledgement. I mean, they've just stuffed a lot of things on that road because, and, and I don't know how many meetings we sat in, but they wanna punch that through the Highway 40 for a bypass.
Well, and, and so the thing I ask is, you know, there's, there's all those different categories of roads and I'm not sure what one would be a major or throwing, you know, which classification that's always.
Yeah, so it's one of the ones we identified through the Smith. The road facility plan, we had Smith do, Smith Engineering. So, yeah, it's identified as a major one. I think just the complaints we've had on speed on that road tells you what kind of a corridor that is.
Or what they...
What they think it is, that's right, as we look to signage and those things. Do you have any questions for me? Is there, I know that's a lot of information.
Can I have, any comments from the residents? Tom?
No. I couldn't see where, I couldn't see where the property actually was, you were kinda standing in the way of it.
This little gray square, right across the road, this three acre parcel. So you got, so you got airport industrial.
Right, right.
This is industrial in the town.
Right.
And then this is the county transfer station, which is all industrial. Right.
What about, what about to the west of your piece?
This is Hawaiian parcels. And so this is, uh, these were both brought in as commercial and with the commercial development agreement and then they didn't fall through that agreement and it was moved back into RA five.
It just went back?
Yeah, and the town, the town put that back into RA five at that point. It was a big commercial development, had a lot of storage units on it that were incidental to what was gonna go on there. Those plans fell through because of the economy or whatever, and, and so that was moved back at that point because the concept plan that they presented had expired.
Is, is there a, is there a future plan for traffic to...
There is, and so you've heard us talk about the, the alignment here on 3,000. That, that road, you see across the road that's now cut. Uh, the public hearings already went into Charleston's side for abandonment of the current right of way for 3,000 south. And that's, that's what I was talking about a little bit earlier, is we was a township, as a planning commission, we turned that road. And a lot had to do with the county and those transfers. Trucks couldn't make that corner, that tight corner. So we took, uh, with, with Mountain Land Association of Government's help, we designed on this side, when I say our side, the Daniel side, to accept a turn for a semi-four there, so it could be lighted. This is within the last probably three years, is that when we started that 40 and 180 and 189?
The first agreement was?
Yeah.
Probably.
Probably three years ago. And we worked with all the municipalities touching along these corridors. And we've designated corridors along 40 and 89 that are, will be future signalized intersections. But UDOT came to the municipalities and said, if you don't line them up now, we'll never put a light there. Because it's just too darn expensive. And so our point was, get the design in, so as these people come in, that's the process. Well, great, you wanna build this here, but here's where the road's gonna be, it will be lined up for a semi-four. Uh, on the other side of this, and, and you're starting to see it now, but on the other side of this road, as you know, down Charleston now, we have the charter school. There's a lot of traffic come up and down there. I don't know at what point that that will qualify for, for a light, but UDOT makes that, they make that determination. But we've done our homework.
So this has always been part of the town plan, I'm not sure why we're, why we're arguing, discussing this. I mean, that, that was commercial, next to you is commercial.
It was.
Where's it gonna end?
Where will the commercial end? Wherever the town decides it ends.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's, that's the whole thing on it, is we, we don't go out and tell people what we wanna do, we are application driven. So if you wanna do something with your property, you could, could put in the application, it runs through the process and that's what we're doing.
And the most we have is a 20-year plan that we, there's some overlap with Charleston that they might annex or we might annex as far as if the landowner wanted to come either way as, Eric, my team.
And we've had both sides of the highway back and forth, so.
In our management plan.
They've kinda played the municipalities against each other there. We don't really play that well, but. Come if you want, if you don't, okay. So, and anyway, Charleston ended up annexing that one on the other side, which is the same developer that just built up here on Highway. And anyway, Charleston ended up annexing that one on the other side, which is the same developer that just built up here on Highway 40. It's the same developer on that side, so Mike Peters. Yeah, so he's got the parcels over there. Through his partnership, I should say.
Okay, any other questions?
If I have a comment, if I can make a comment. After going to planning, you know, I was kind of, I guess, quite shocked of how planning handled it because they really didn't give a reason why, other than they said that two of the neighbors had come and wanted to know what was happening. But they really, you know, they didn't tell us anything. They just said no. And I'm thinking, I thought we had, I thought Eric had been kind of trained to know what the law is and you can't do public clamor and you can't just not give an answer, you know?
Just curious, were you, this throw with them or close or kind of one of the same things with the planning as far as presentation?
No, I did not, no.
That's why he's doing this now.
I fully expected planning to know all this.
I would expect.
I would fully expect that. I would fully expect they know what the general plan is, that they are following those things alone. Certainly that opens up opportunities for training in the future. So. Probably certainly does.
In some defense for, for the planning commission though, I think they know what they're doing. I think they know the general plan. I, I think they made comments, whether I agree or not, that they felt it didn't fit and things like that. I don't, I don't think they just came on and said, oh, we don't want this. I, I, I was at the meeting, I thought they, I thought they thought about it, made some good comments.
Yeah, that's what they want, more information, which is why I brought that to you guys tonight. So I've only went through the town documents of what is there, so.
And I, I know, I appreciate it because I certainly don't know everything. Now, I have a question.
Okay.
If you have a comment three, I assume you're going to recuse yourself from the vote for anything on this particular matter? I shouldn't assume anything.
I, I may have a conflict of interest, I certainly have to state that. I don't have to recuse myself from the vote though.
You know, I, I would like to have more time myself just to chew on this, for bad reason only.
Certainly. Certainly, there's no hurry for this at all, so.
What, Eric, what if we went back to planning and he did this and maybe he had them? Again, I, I think they might have known this, I don't know, but do you think it would be worthwhile taking this presentation back to planning and having them reconsider it?
I think that would be valuable if it wasn't the bunkers doing it. I think that there might be some side issues that may present itself. So, I mean, because it's sketchy, you know? As you fill positions and then you have something come in, you wonder about that, you know? You drag your feet, there's been, I know of several missed opportunities because, just because of that. You think about it and you think, eh, maybe I'll just pass on this for right now. I have, you know, the opportunities within the town, maybe you kind of hang back. The problem with this is that this could be a timestamp, so.
What do you mean, timestamp?
A timestamp. If there are other things that come into play that we're not in control of as a town, that this is a timestamp that would.
That may affect this, affect everybody involved in the decision.
On that whole end of town, so.
Oh, yeah, all of the years.
So just a couple of things and I'm certainly, I mean, if you guys want to continue that, next, next month, we'll have a new member here, hopefully.
I think you probably would have a full, a full group and, and, you know, because John would also be here and.
So I just want to get that information to you guys and you're certainly able to take that.
Eric, would you please explain the part about you not presenting it? I didn't understand that.
Well, it's just because I own the property and the position that I fill in the town, it's kind of a, it's kind of touchy thing, you know? And that's what.
That doesn't seem fair to you.
It, it's a dog. It's not fair. By any means, it's not fair. But, but then again, Eric knows where all that information is because of where he is. So I'm able to go through the town documents and point out, it's your plan, this is what you scheduled for this property, this is your plan. What are we waiting for? So I'm able to say those things because of where I am. So it's a two-edged sword. The perceived is, and, and, you know, if John wanted to send that back.
And that's what they're being cautious about.
Well, I don't think, I don't think this board is different, but planning is, we're on the planning director. And so if I was to send that back to planning, well, Eric sent that back with the board and beat us up on it. You know, and that's what it looks like.
Well, that's what I'm feeling bad about, that's not, that's not fair to you at all. I mean, I don't know how we treat him fairly, that's what I'm asking.
I'm just going to sit down.
You know, I, like he said, he did not have to recuse himself from the vote or not. You know, if, if all of us are here, I'd like all of us to understand it very well and not have that be an issue if it was an issue. And so I would think, you know, we're being time-sensitive, I don't know how long. I don't think this is dragging out too terribly long as much as the council's just been presented with the form that we have. Or I would think we'd chew on it and we'll have some new members next month. And I think Glenn would be able to get them the documents so they can be freed up on it and have a similar or a much further, better discussion next month.
Totally willing to do whatever you want. And we don't have to do anything and just continue to next month and maybe have a full council there to look at it and that's fine.
Eric, what was the vote? Was there a vote?
The vote was, was three against, which wasn't enough.
Three against?
Three against, and then they did a second vote and one switched over, so we had the four to get the vote.
So four to deny?
To deny, yeah. At first, there wasn't enough to, to pass it or to deny it. And then one of them switched, so we had four, which caused, which is enough to carry the vote.
So that's why they got the four to make that recommendation.
Yeah. Otherwise, it would have just came with no recommendation.
So just to give you some thoughts, I really hate going against what planning suggests. And if there was some way we thought we could have them look at it, maybe thinking they didn't understand the situation or understand this information, that would really be helpful for me. The other thing is, we did have a public hearing and some neighbors, as I recall, were somewhat against it. Am I wrong there?
Well, what I heard from them is they just wanted to know what the plan was.
More information as to being against it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And in fact, I fully see that one of those is going to be right up here as soon as this ring. One of those will be coming towards the town to look for commercial property on.
Yeah, and so once we start that, a lot of this idea of, I mean, one of these things you highlighted was more traffic on the, on the road. And it seems like if we're starting to do commercial there, how do we not have more traffic?
Well, you will, but it's less impactful to the town. That's why we, I think that's why we highlighted those corridors.
Let's see, there was something else I did here that was more like, be careful what you do there.
In that area, there are no access off of 89?
No, no, the airport is tied up all the.
Tied up all that access, so there.
Yeah. Yeah, we've really been closed in there as a town, really.
And that new road is above you, so you couldn't even access that if they didn't put a different road down to the airport. I mean, the airport's going to take that whole swamp.
Possibly, yeah.
So do you, do you think making some of those lots along there commercial would even, you think they would even affect really the amount of traffic on 3000? Do you think they would increase it or decrease it or change it?
I, I think if they were made commercial, I don't know that it would change it the way it is right now, but if the use is changed, it could.
So like if they, you mean if the use of the commercial, if these properties became commercial, it would change the usage of 3000?
Not to, I don't think so. I think, that's why I think everybody will access the highway and not come through the town.
But can they access the highway? They, they can access it through any but way but 3000, right?
Right.
They can get to you but through.
But 3000 South is their only access, that's correct. And it, and it looks like in their, in their long-range plan that 3000 South moves, so.
3000 South moves.
They're looking to move at 89 to the airport, they're looking to move 2000 South to the airport or.
There's some big plans going on.
A lot of stuff's going on.
So anyway, I don't know, I just wish planning would have maybe had this information if they did.
Well, like I said, I don't know what, what the thought process was with them.